Start with the selection of Chair and Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for the Chair of Government's Review Subcommittee? Madam Chair, I have a motion to appoint Maria Pearson as Chair for the Government's Review Subcommittee for 2014 to 2018.
All right, so move.
Second. All in favor?
Carrie.
And I'll move Counselor Green for Vice Chair.
Counselor Green for Vice Chair. All in favor of that?
Carrie.
Counselor Ferguson?
Yep, over to you.
Floor is now yours.
Okay.
Are these not the most comfortable chairs in the entire building?
Okay. They're a little big.
Maybe that's why I think they're so comfortable.
Okay, so welcome everyone. And Mr. Clark, are there any changes to the agenda today?
Madam Chair, there are no changes, however, I just wanted to make note that there is a meeting at 2:30 in this room following, so if we could try and finish by 2:15 if possible.
That's where I have to be at, so, okay.
I'm sure, you know, I have to be one and out. I'm going to try to get to it.
Have you got a passport?
I did something.
You need your passport, you need to water.
Okay. Are there any declarations of interest here today on the table? Seeing none, can I have, well, this is kind of difficult, but I guess the approval of the minutes of September 5th, 2014, I can't move that as a previous member because I'm the other one here as a previous member.
I'll move.
Yeah, okay, is that okay? Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Partridge, all in favor?
Carrie.
Carrie, thank you. No consent items, no presentations today, so we're going to go on to discussions. It's a 2016 committee, a council calendar.
What come you not, I don't know, direct us to, I guess you didn't, why we don't put the budget meetings in here so we can start to block those days out?
Jim?
I don't believe the budget meetings have been confirmed yet, but once they are confirmed, we will add it to the calendar and we circulate.
Okay, because, you know, sometimes we get booked out a long advance and it's going to be budget meetings, we like to hold those until it's announced.
So through the Chair, I suspect, we'll be bringing that forward in the next month or two in terms of the 2016 budget meeting. We typically bring that to Committee GIC either in August or September.
And at that time, we can amend, well, the calendar will be a matter of seconds. So is everyone okay with everything on the calendar? Yes, proposals, hopefully they have a mover. Counselor Green moving it. Counselor Partridge, second, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Yes, move on then, oh, that's it. Okay, so we have, sorry, 6.2 is amendments to the terms of reference of the climate and security in the downtown core task force. So any discussions on 6.2?
I'll move it.
Just during the, find their place on it? Everybody's got that, everybody's okay with it? We've got Counselor Partridge moving it. Counselor Ferguson, wait a second, thank you, all in favor? Carrie. Carrie, there being our correspondence from John Balodnog, city clerk, city of Kingston, respecting the municipal electoral reform within the province of Ontario. Tony, did you want to give us some information on this first, to allow us to?
Through you, Madam Chair, yeah, the provincial government is doing a municipal electoral reform, they're doing a tighter municipal elections act. We have a meeting on Friday where there were clerks from around the province who have met, but at this point, each of us will be putting in submissions to the, to the province. Anyone can do it, as a matter of fact, it's on the municipal affairs website where you can go in and if you have opinions, things you'd like to see different, et cetera, et cetera, you can do it right online as well. John's taking the opportunity to go forward and make a more formal presentation, but they are listening to all, not only municipalities, people who work in municipalities, but to the public as well.
Okay, thank you. I have Counselor Ferguson first in question.
What is preferred balloting?
Preferred ballot, preferential ballot, it's an instant runoff system where you'll vote for one, two, or three, and then it's at the conclusion of the first round, the bottom person will be taken on to the bottom two, or whatever it is, depending on the number of ballot candidates you have, and the two and three ballots will be assigned moving up.
So there's more than one election day, there could be a series of elections?
No, that's runoff voting. This is considered instant runoff voting is what they're looking at. Runoff voting is where you would do a ballot and then you eliminate someone and then you do another ballot, but this, all you do is move up the votes for a particular candidate. So if you've got one, two, and three, and let's say three is, or, you have one, two, three, four, or five, and five is then eliminated, or four is eliminated, whatever it may be, those ballots are then moved up to the next person.
I don't get it.
But I do like, you're going to be seeing a report coming to council and then coming to GIC in the next three weeks, and it'll have a demonstration of how it all works. You have to really see it laid out first, and that's what they're, that's what they're pushing.
So can I give an example, say, and I think this is how I know someone tried to explain to me, you have, okay, three candidates, so you've got first, second, third place. Third place goes off, but the votes for the third place opponent move up to the second place.
That's correct, they're all the way along.
So they could end up becoming first.
So if there's four candidates, the fourth one drops off and they all move to the third?
Mm-hmm.
The major benefit being is that you end up with somebody who would have a mandate of 50 plus one. So what happens if you don't get 50?
They're going to make it that it's just the total, they're not going to make it a 50 plus one because of the number of ballots sometimes you do get. You could have, and it's happened in the States, they'll get a 50 plus one, so you really have to do the election again. So they're going to not make it a 50 plus one, and that's the province's mandate right now.
So what's it do? So four all has to go to three, three all has to go to two, then what are you doing then? If you don't get the 50 plus one?
At that point, it's, it's going to be whoever the, I'll call it the survivor of the total number of ballots is, but in most cases, you will get a 50 plus one, and remember the-
On the first run-through?
Yes, on the first run-through. With the 50 plus one, it's, remember, just those who have voted, not the number of electors.
I get that.
Yeah.
So if you don't get the 50 plus one, you say the province isn't going to initiate that?
Not the 50 plus one, that's what we were told on Friday.
What's that, so, why go through all this stuff? What's the purpose of it?
Good question.
All right, so why are we even considering this? There's no value to it.
Well, the province is considering it because a special interest group out of Toronto has been pressuring the Premier to bring this aboard as an alternative to vote. It will be an alternative, it won't be brought in, you have to do it. The other problem is, they're only bringing it in for councillor and mayor, they're not bringing it in for school trustee. So that will be another issue that I'll deal with when I'm doing a presentation to council as well. So there are those who believe this is a fairer system, I'm not of that opinion right now, I haven't been convinced that way, but you will have the alternative to either going to the runoff system or remaining with what we have.
If I'm number four, I don't necessarily want to, I want to go to number three.
Exactly, exactly.
So why do this? If I, okay, now, it does sound like, Tony, you'd recommend we support this thing?
From the information I have right now, I would not recommend it, but I'm still doing some investigations into it.
Okay, it's all right.
And if I may, through you, the biggest problem for me right now is having two different types of elections, one running the old way for trustees and one running the new way. We're going to just confuse the heck out of the electorate, who even now sometimes have difficulty, will we say, pick two of the seven trustees to be elected, there's questions there, do I have to pick two, do I just pick one, et cetera, et cetera. So there are issues, it would take a massive marketing plan by the city just through the electorate.
So I have Counselor Green and Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you. So I think that we had a fantastic opportunity, given this recent legislation, to revisit our electoral system, given that a bicormal system first passed the polls was designed for two parties in the 1800s. It's not a special interest group out of Toronto, respectfully, there's a national conversation right now, electoral reform, that includes many different stakeholders that go way beyond Toronto, as witnessed in this correspondence from Kingston, in fact. So I would caution us to jump into a four-minute conversation on ranked balloting based on very, very superficial understandings of it without having a full conversation and presentation from advocates and people who might be skeptical of it. That's part of the reason why I wanted to see this referred. Certainly, there's a provincial-wide conversation, and I can definitely see some of the pitfalls of running parallel municipal elections with the school board trustees. However, I think that this merits a public engagement process, it merits a unbiased kind of full look at what these processes bring to the table. It brings and begs the question of low voter turnout and its perpetual decline, and I know that there's lots of conversations on why that is the way it is, and this is by no means my suggesting this being a silver bullet, but I think we have to look at what all the variables are. So having just run against 14 other candidates and understanding the confusion that's presented there, knowing that I haven't really no mandate in terms of only getting, you know, 2,000 and change, or 3,000 votes in a 40,000-person constituency, I am very open and hopeful that we can have a full conversation across the city.
Through you, Madam Chair, what I would recommend, Counselors, is, this is going to be going through into the Act, the Minister has already said that, I would recommend waiting until it is officially into the Act, because we really don't know at this point in time, given the feedback, pro and con, that was given on Friday, and that will be given through the head flip to line 27 to get information to the province, exactly how this will be worded. So before we go off on deciding or doing public consultations, whatever it may be, I would recommend that we wait till it's officially in the Act, in the wording accordingly, because we have been fooled in the past with things that have been told are going into the Act and not going in. So just, as I said, no, no problem with consultation on it, I mean, whichever way you want to go, it's just my personal opinion on it, but I would wait till it's in the Act.
So through you, Madam Chair, to Tony, given the timelines of this, given that we're into 2015 already, what is the window in terms of creating submissions that would potentially put Hamilton into this conversation? If we wait till the Act happens, are we then out of the 2018 election cycle?
Through you, Madam Chair, no, not at all. The province has said to us that this will be part of the Act in plenty of time for us too, if we want to do consultations or if we want to make decisions on which way we're going to go. There were some conversations on Friday about being able to use machines now, recalibrated and new software, et cetera, et cetera. I've talked to our supplier, and I don't have the information from them saying it would be difficult at all, but other municipalities are finding that. So from our standpoint, from Hamilton's standpoint, I don't see it as an issue at all. We did bring up that the last time they passed legislation, it was the day before the election started, the election was started, they have guaranteed us that will not happen this time. So from everything I heard on Friday, there will still be time for us to have active discussions and to make a decision as to which way we would like to go.
So given that, certainly wouldn't want to, in preliminary conversations, dismiss what could potentially be a new conversation for electoral reform. I don't, personally, my own, my own personal opinion, Madam Chair, is that there's never a bad time to start that conversation, regardless of whether legislation has gone through or not, given that if people are interested in talking about elections, we're then increasing the public discourse on our democracy, which I think to be a good thing. So I'm hopeful that when you bring your report, that whoever's interested, be it special interest group or learned, you know, political leaders or academics, that they might be able to have a better, more fuller presentation or understanding on what this could mean, because it's not just, it's not just ranked balloting that we're talking about here. There are people who are also talking about the opportunity of giving landed immigrants the right to vote at municipal level, which as I understand, at some point in our past here in Canada, we allowed people to do under the crown or whatever, what have you, and so forth. So there are multiple different ways that people are looking at improving our electoral process, given the absolute abysmal turnout that we have on our, on our, on our election day. So I'm very excited that we've been given this opportunity from the provincial legislature to revisit this conversation. I'm not sure, through you, Madam Chair, when was the last time the Act was opened and they had this conversation?
2009.
And they, yeah, and so certainly there'll be all different types of opportunities, I'm hoping that citizens can engage in this process, we can have the conversation. I get a sense through you, Madam Chair, people are going to make their submissions on their own behalf regardless of what our outcome is. My only hope that is as a municipality, as a governance committee, as a council, that we provide people the opportunity to do that and support it, even if it's not necessarily in agreeance with what our own personal beliefs are. So I'll leave it there, and I'm excited, I hope that we can see this through and get the proper information, well-balanced presentations that allow us to make the right and informed decisions. Thank you.
Counselor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I tend to, I tend to agree with Tony 100% on this. We really need to wait until it is in the Act. I remember when I was on the chamber board and we were going through discussions and they were, they were looking at the ranked balloting system, and I can't remember how long ago that was, but it may have been the 2009 timeframe that staff were referring to. You know, we did have a couple of public meetings, people got all, you know, all going, fired up, and then it never ended up anything happening to it. So, you know, it, there was, quite frankly, we have a lot on our plate that we need to stay focused on, and, so, anyway, I'm quite prepared to move a motion, if that's what needs to happen, we can just receive this, this letter, this piece of correspondence, and, but I think we too should wait until it is into legislation, and knowing that staff are going to be bringing a report forward, which she said to GIC, I believe, through you, Madam Chair?
That's correct.
Yes.
Through you, Madam Chair, here's the report on the 2014 election, and it will contain some of the information that we've already acquired, just to keep you apprised of what's happening, what's going to be going forward.
Right, so, good through you, Madam Chair, will that be just an information report, or will there be some recommendations attached to it?
Through you, Madam Chair, it's an information report.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ferguson, as I know you mentioned a motion, Counselor Ferguson.
Absolutely. Table about who received it, thank you for that, I'll present a motion, motion to receive this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson, second, Counselor Partridge.
On the question, this document is just correspondence, is that correct, or, I mean, all this is doing is starting a preliminary conversation anyways, so it is received, and just so that we're-
The report, well-
From the GSC. What's the date on that, so I can see if there's any public that might want to delegate?
Through you, Madam Chair, they had to July 27th.
No, when you're going to be presenting.
Let's see, it's July 6th, is it close? July 6th.
July's GSC.
That's correct.
So the calendar, Madam Chair. So, Madam Chair, through you, if, through you to clerks, if there are members of the public who have strong opinions about this and want to come and provide maybe a counter-narrative or an alternate view, they can come and do so at that time?
Through you, Madam Chair, this isn't going to be making any contradictions, this report, this is just going to be informing you, this is what I have done today, that it'll be telling you about the 2014 election, it'll tell you that the province is conducting a review at this point in time, and that it is considerate, the type of instant runoff voting. It isn't going to have a pros and cons in it at this point in time.
Okay, sorry, Madam Chair, I thought I heard a con, I thought I heard a personal opinion on it, and that's the agreement.
Okay, thank you, everyone, so on that-
And sorry, Madam Chair, just for information sake, as I said before, if any of your constituents are asking, or yourself, it is on the municipal affairs website that they can go in, and all of this is very clearly laid out as far as questions and how you want to respond to, so I would encourage as many people as possible to get on that site and put their thoughts together.
And last point, Madam Chair, before this passes, just for the record, I'll be hosting a personal public consultation myself sometime this week, so we'll, I'm sure we'll get lots of early interest.
Excellent. Okay, so on the motion now, all in favor? Carrie. Carrie, thank you, everyone. So we're going to go on now to 6.4, is correspondence from Andre Moran, the Ambulanceman of Ontario, respecting investigation into whether the city of Hamilton held an illegal meeting on December 10th. You've got the background, actually, you have this report before you, any discussion on this, or did the clerks, you don't need to give any update, the report was here, so we're not-
A motion to receive would be appropriate, because it says we didn't violate any rules.
Actually, it was the recommendations in the Ambulanceman's report regarding the practice of audio or recording of closed sessions, and we provided some background information from the last time, it was at GIC for your information.
Yes, I remember that, got you. So I'm sorry, Rose, my apologies, I'm cognitiv, you're assistant, so are we-
If you turn to page, the last page of the Ambulanceman's report, there's two recommendations there, the one recommendation regarding the, recommendation of recording a closed session.
And we had that report, and you gave that also to us, right, from the past, previous committee, last term, we dealt with that as far as the video, the audio, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so Counselor, I have Counselor Green, I'm sorry, Counselor Ferguson, still across the floor.
So, as the chairman said, I thought that last year, the Senate Council thinking of the law, but decided not to audio or video record. The, in fact, Counselor Jackson won't even turn his microphone on, so I don't know about this, because you never know whose hands this could fall into, so I'm inclined to simply receive this one, we never violated anything, and I like, the Ambulanceman's heard about it, he's made two recommendations, we've already dealt with that, so I'd like to see it simply received.
Counselor-
Through you to legal, what is the difference between the municipal elected official's protection under civil law versus a provincial or federal? I've understood that in these closed meetings, defamation or liable at provincial or federal level is provided a certain protection under the law, and is it different under the municipal Act? Because I think at the root of audio recording these in-camera discussions is the idea of legal recourse, should something be said that might be defamatory, and examples have been made, if somebody said, you know, gosh, that developer's a crook, there's fear that in the course of this, this recommendation, that that might be held as, I guess defamation is spoken, liable is written, so that would be spoken?
Okay, so that's kind of a big question, and I just want to try to take it as little as I can. So defamation is a broad term, so that is one issue that's been expressed, simply there, that's an issue about whether or not qualified privilege extends to members of council when there's the, qualified privilege does extend to members of council when there's the, there's some nuances, but generally the protection is there. So that issue is really not, really a live issue that councillors need to be overly concerned, but I know that's one they get thrown on the table frequently. There are much more concerning issues from the perspective of electronically recording or audio recording closed meetings that have to do with protections against litigators going on fishing expeditions for records of recorded meetings. So those are from a, certainly from the staff perspective, what we put together in terms of a report to the council of 2013, the much larger concerns have to do with other parties extricating information through other methods, because the risk, as soon as you have a record, there's going to be inability to get a record. So the report that was provided in 2013 campus of those issues in quite lengthy detail, including the fact that in the American jurisdictions, and there are quite a few, where there's a requirement to electronically record closed meetings, there are sort of the counterpart protections embedded in the legislation. The state provides legislation that says thou shalt record closed meetings, and it also says, here are the limited purposes for which anybody can reveal disclosure of those records. So those work together, so it creates a framework. So the report that we put together in 2013 for council provided that as a guideline, and we suggested that council should urge the province to put that framework in place if the province wants to see us informed on this, and that was what staff considered the best, and that's also, that I know found its way into, through council direction, into the province, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housings file, I spoke with Sarah Benaxon about three weeks ago, she indicated there would be a consultation, it's now that we've heard from Tony Paulson's being commenced, the consultation on not only the municipal elections act, but also municipal act, also part of the legislation that closes on July 27th, legally, so they have the city of Hamilton's position on it. So that, that's, there are a number of reasons and qualified privileges, there are a few reasons, and all, I know that's one that's spoken in a lot, but we have concerns that if council moves in this direction, it needs to sort of hold foresight and forethought and information, that is, create a record that has to be then handled, that has to be disclosed on certain requests, it will have to be archived or disclosed out under certain rules, and there aren't any, so there are no rules in place in municipal, so those are the things that the province is plotting to be putting in place. I understand that the Ambulanceman is compelled to encourage municipalities to do this, but only as far as we are aware, two or three municipalities materially are involved in this.
So, Madam Chair, could there not be a direction or something to that effect that is, was there, I guess I'll start there, Madam Chair, through you to legal, was there a direction from staff, a clear message from, you know, the mayor on behalf of the council, that that be included into this process? Has that happened?
No, that has not actually happened. What happened was a direction from council to provide the recommendation report along with council's position on it, that we would be looking for this framework to be added to legislation, but that was back in 2013. I guess you would say, although I know from, from a staff person to a staff person at the province, I know that this is in the file, I don't think there's been, what they would consider a further input as part of that consultation. So that might be something that committee could recommend is to sort of resurrect that position, and before you, I believe, to distribute it, so to provide that to ministry, saying this is the city of Hamilton's position on it, my thought.
Because, Madam Chair, rather than simply just table this, and I understand, what I'm hearing is qualified privilege, that's what I'm hearing is being the bone of the contention for my colleagues in terms of why they wouldn't want to have this audio recorded. If that's not the case, and through you, Madam Chair, if there was a willingness from staff to report back on that legality, as well as have, you know, the possibility for direction that our, that our council put forward, our own recommendations that would, that would provide the kinds of protections, so you say that people aren't going on fishing expeditions, I can't see anything wrong with audio recording conversations, I don't say things that I wouldn't want the public to hear anyway, that's my own personal style, if it's controversial, chances are I want the public to hear it at some point in time. So although I can respect why we have closed meetings, I would hope that through legislation there would be processes in place that would keep those closed, but if, through you, Madam Chair, you're suggesting that there could be some weaknesses there, or there could be some, some legal challenges there, then I would hope that out of this governance committee, our recommendation would be, and I'm happy to move the motion, our recommendation would be that we put those issues on paper and we send them to the Ambulance Minister, Ted McMecon, to address those issues prior to agreeing to the audio recording, because, Madam Chair, if they're the only reasons, if qualified privilege is not one, but those ones that you have identified, if that's the only barrier from us doing this and they address it, then we should do it. If they can't address it, then there would be a reason why we wouldn't. And so that's why I would much rather see us take a proactive direction from this subcommittee, rather than simply table it and receive it without comment. That would be my, my hope, so that would be my motion, and if, after, in Counsel Ferguson's motion, if we're happy to entertain that, at least conversation at the, at the ministry level, I would very much appreciate that.
Counselor Partridge?
So, to follow along on that, Madam Chair, I guess what I thought I heard Janice say was that we made the decision, we got the direction from council back in 2013, and that was forwarded on to the province, but now we have a formal consultation or opportunity to put comments and thoughts forward. So we could just resurrect what we had already said and have that formally as a motion forwarded on, and I'm quite comfortable doing that, because we did spend a considerable amount of time talking about it at the time, as opposed to coming up with some new comments now, because we really, we have council direction, that's, that's what we did. So if that's the intent of your motion would be to do that, just to resurrect what we, what we had already passed and to submit that on as part of this formal consultation process, then I would be supportive of doing that. But to go down that road again, when we've already dealt with it and come up with our position, and until it is, as you've said, until it's legislated, there's a lot of gaps and a lot of misinformation, particularly around policy and handling, you know, the different- different aspects of it. There's just nothing existing right now. So those, that would be my comment. However, if that's not the intent of your motion, then I would like to put a motion forward just basically saying, you know, to resurrect what we've already done and forward that on as part of the formal process. Through you, madam chair, just comments from just?
Just, just thinking of one, one short comment and that is, there was a lot of work done before my arrival in Hamilton. There was already a lot of work that had been done. I'm looking at the council's direction, which was dating back from the Governance Review Subcommittee of November of 2012. I think there was work done even before that and post category and probably in terms of that. So there were two or three reports that predated and there was a lot of work and discussion. So I think that the end result in 2013 really covered all bases. If I can provide any further information on qualified privilege, I very happen to do so, but it really didn't figure into this. You know, this was really an issue about making sure that the legislative framework is in place and that the city of Hamilton and council indicated a willingness to, to look at this if the proper framework is in place in the legislation.
And, and, and thank you for that, Janice, because I, you know, I really think that that's the line we need to, we need to follow through on and to hold at this point.
Thank you. Fully respect the work that's being done in past councils. My intent would be to, to take what has been said and given the fact that municipal act is open, have a clear direction that that be addressed at the ministry level, right? But I also, speaking as a new councillor, respect that there are three other new councillors, one of which is present here, two of which, one of which who had, who had a previous motion referred to the subcommittee, who also may want to revisit and add commentary. So I would by no way want to limit their ability to, to, to learn from and contribute to this conversation. It is a new term of council and there's a quarter turnover. So there might be some folks who might have a different opinion. I know I've heard qualified privilege be used by a number of my colleagues and perhaps if there was a presentation that clearly outlined that again and why that's not an issue, then, then maybe, you know, then maybe we have something to build on here. Maybe we don't. I don't know, but I know that it's something that I'm certainly interested in seeing a clear message sent through you, madam chair, just so that we're clear. There was no message sent to the ministry. There was nothing officially, there was just recommendations back. So given that municipal act is open and, and given that this would be the time for them to address it, I think it's incumbent on us to resurrect the recommendations, but respectfully allow further comments for people who weren't on the previous term of council, should they have it, maybe they don't. But I wouldn't want to cut that off here. That's all.
So, direction?
So just, would this be something that we would also bring forward on whatever date that July 6th or July 7th? Have sort of a short update on that? I'm, I'm just sort of looking for where.
I think that's.
Yeah, and I can, I can simply build that into the motion if you, if you like, that when councillor Green had said as a friendly amendment, as long as we are resurrecting what was the position that was done as an information report to, to let the rest of the new councillors, I think that's very fair. Yes, absolutely, the new councillors should know and have part of that as a discussion. If it ties in with legislatively with the information that needs to go to the province and can be done on July 6th, I guess through you to, to staff, is this something that is a good fit or?
July 22nd.
This is July 27th. My report is just an information report on what happened in the 2014 election. I'm just making you aware that the acts are open and that you can leave commentary. I'm only including into it the part about the voting because that's been pressed by the province themselves. So I just want to give you a heads up, this is coming down the chute. I'm not aware of any other changes at this point in time. I know we're putting forward a number of changes, like all municipalities and all clerks and managers of elections are doing, who've been involved in this for many years. So our, my report is just strictly how things went in the 2014 election, what we're looking forward to in 2018.
Okay, and thank you, madam chair, that, that really does clarify, so there are two separate issues.
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing. So, but if it, if it, you know, makes sense to bring it forward at, at July meeting, if through you, madam chair, does that give you enough time?
If it is simply dusting off the report for 2013, that's fine. Okay. I, I don't know if that, I'm looking at Rose in terms of process.
Right, madam chair, I just wanted to make you aware that although we've looked, there's no indication that there's a deadline on changes to our consultation on the municipal act. There is a definite deadline on the elections act, but we have to be ready for 2018. I think the process of consultation on the other pieces of legislation are coming along. We're not aware of a deadline for this, for that act.
Okay. Yes, I still have the floor. So, so thank you for that. Then what I'm hearing is there is no rush and, and, you know, I, I wouldn't suggest that we rush everything onto that July date if we don't need to, but, you know, perhaps direct staff to come back, you know.
To this committee.
To this committee, right, to be to this committee to start with, you know, at some point in time. Because I'm not hearing there is urgency or there is a deadline as opposed to the elections.
Couldn't we just have it go to the following GIC?
Sorry?
I just, couldn't we have it just go to the following GIC? I don't want, I don't want this to get lost in either something that's ongoing. If it goes to the next GIC after that, then it provides us and enables, enables us to deal with outstanding business and that's what I'm looking at, outstanding business.
Madam chair, if it's just the process that Janet suggested or asked, that it just be a previous report come forward, so if August is okay for Janet?
What, what day is that?
August, uh, yes, September. August the 10th.
Maybe, my concern, I mean, that might be, yeah, maybe, maybe the fall. I just like to put a date on things, madam chair.
September, September.
September? If it gets referred back here, now we're looking at 2016.
Well, in all fairness, you and Arina, they relate to the new members here and you say there's more than we should really just go straight to GIC. We just rehash them up. We just.
I agree.
Thank you. So for September, is it? So I'll move that.
Second to councillor Partridge. On her favor.
Carrie.
Carrie, everyone, excellent, thank you very much. Good to be on, so are there any motions today, notices of motions today? Nothing, you know, motions are before us. There's no, I guess, do we need to go on, look at the unfinished, the outstanding business list?
So there are four items. The first three I'm not familiar with, but the last one I definitely am, that's going to the June, so that actually went today, I believe, and it was passed at AFNA.
Oh, that's right, yes, thank you.
What, what's that?
So item D, the posted on restrictions pulling off for a period.
So that, or sorry, madam chair, through you to madam.
A raise.
Yeah.
We gave them the motions.
No, you don't.
I'm wondering what was the outcome of that, because that was certainly something I've been very interested in myself personally, to find out what is happening. I understand through you, madam chair, there is a cooling off period for staff. Has this now been applied to elected officials? If so, that'd be great news.
Madam chair, through me, could, so.
I can, I can actually, too, on what happened today. So what happened was there's a mandate to the employee court conduct that highlights that for senior level staff, which is directly above, there is a cooling off period of 12 months to prevent an outgoing party employee from acting on behalf of an individual organization where they've had some internal policies, issue, project, what have you, for a period of 12 months after they've been senior counted. This is also, it's not retroactive, but it is effective from the council ratifying it, which I guess would be over the next 12 months and a Wednesday. And so, however, it is already embedded in the contracts of a few senior level employees who have been hired since this first became a point at which council directed staff to take this up. So there are, at least a couple of contracts have been done that contain that position. And it's not an unreasonable permission in terms of benchmarking that we supported that this occurs in some other provincial and federal organizations. That the, this committee, I believe, moved away from applying it to elected officials, from my recollection.
It, it's, it, it seems to be that it's still referred to governance to address the cooling off period, so I, I'm not clear based on this outstanding business that's been dealt with.
I think this, okay, so historically, it came to governance first as far as looking into this, is that not correct? I remember. It came to governance first and then it was directed through to audit finance. That's, that's the history.
Madam chair, through you, I, I believe it has been a decision through council, has gone through. What we can do is we can have Denny go back and research that and provide that information to me.
I, I just, historically thinking, madam chair, I know that, I mean, having followed council previously, I know the topic came up. I know I also see a lot of folks walking around the halls, you know, elected and so on, past elected, so on and so forth. I would love to get a full update on this as a new councillor. I'm not clear that it's been resolved by way of motion, but if it has, I'd be happy to see it. If it hasn't, I'd love to have a conversation.
So the report was passed to audit finance today, so.
That was regarding staff. What I'm very interested in is, is what is under the status of this outstanding business subcommittee is that referred to governance to address the cooling off period for an elected official specifically. That's what I'm most interested in.
Yeah, thank you, madam chair, and just if I can try and add some context here, because I do remember the, the, the specific situation that actually drove this motion coming forward to begin with. We did have a senior official, a couple of them actually, who were retiring and then were, you know, in here within a couple of weeks, working with the applicants or proponents who they had been assisting for the last five or six years on the inside and then, you know, so I remember very clearly that whole discussion at the council table. But at the time, it was never directed to elected officials, it was strictly our senior staff because that was an issue. And it did become very difficult for remaining staff, staff who were currently in their positions, to, to have to deal with that situation. So that was one of the reasons why it was, it was passed by council, in fact, I think it was council Marula that, that pushed the motion forward, but it was strictly to do with senior staff.
So on that, I do see before us on the outstanding business, under status, that that was identified. I'm not clear it's dealt with. I can respect that there's context to it, I follow the context. I share the concerns that there are senior level, past elected officials working on files, they worked on with previously for other things. I now see them in my community, working on files, the detriment of our community. I want to see what this looks like and what the past motion is resolving that particular point, because if it wasn't brought up, then it probably wouldn't be in the status of the outstanding business, outstanding business. So if there's, through you, madam chair, to Denny or any of the clerks, if there is information that can be presented for our, for our information, then I would be happy in the future governance subcommittee to deal with that and to have that full information for my own context.
And also the report that was approved in.
Correct.
That's already, so leave that in. Denny, the process for appointing members to the compliance audit committee or.
Madam chair, through you, I don't believe that item was discussed at governance. This is from the selection committee, wanted the consideration of governance to consider whether the, the selection committee should be appointed members to this compliance audit. And I don't think that discussion.
But we have, we have membership for the compliance audit.
Correct, for this term of council, yes.
For this term, correct. How were they selected in the past? Because we've never, that I recall.
It was probably two terms, two, three terms ago where the committee was appointed and they were just renewed by the selection committee and the appointment went through council. So they, they, they're all done through council, but existing members came forward from a few terms ago.
So the, so you're suggesting that we, we need to address whether or not this goes to selection committee?
No, it was the, it was the request from selection committee that governance consider another method of appointing members to, other than through selection.
So what direction B that we can give the.
Work to come back with recommendations for us? Some options, please. Removed by councillor Partridge, sorry, told me, I'm excited by councillor Van Gerde.
Yeah, through you, madam chair, just because of Friday's meeting, they will be looking into this, the government as well, as to how these are selected. Right now, there's the, yeah, there's a belief that there's a lot of conflict of interest in what council's making decisions on the elections and compliance audit committee. And so they're talking about making the elections autonomous from city council. So I, I would recommend that we do come back, but let's wait and see what the outcome of the.
Well, that was my fear, I'm going, wait a minute, but we're selecting these people and then these people will be judging us. That's.
That was the exact point of the selection committee members, but Tony makes a very good point, the compliance audit committee is part of the NEA, so it is still subject to.
So do we just, we'll just sit that, leave that in as the place folder still, as outstanding business list, till more information is forward, because that's. And then at that time, appropriate time, whatever comes down from the province, bring forward, well, we'll speak to it at another next, whenever the next meeting and the report is forward.
Yeah, through you, madam chair, the, the committee's in place up to 2018, so it's not an urgent matter.
Okay, thank you. We don't have a date, Denny, for integrity commissioner by law amendments? That's, that's coming forward.
Madam chair, that was done.
Oh, well, we're doing it again. You're so efficient.
There was an amendment that was put forward.
So do we, can we remove B then? Item B can be removed, moved by councillor Partridge, second by councillor Green to remove item B, thank you. And then the inner city fund, I thought that was all addressed, was it not? We have a report here as well.
So through the chair, that was dealt with, and I believe, last governance committee, and I believe the wording of the committee, the decision of the committee was that as it relates to the inner city fund, that the affected councillors would come back during the budget process with the amendments, and there were no amendments that came about through the 2015 budget process as it relates to the inner city.
Thank you, councillor Partridge. Yes, thank you, madam chair, and just, I was looking at the, at the minutes from the last meeting and through you to Mike, on page three of eight, about halfway down, item D, it says that the geographic factor currently at $5,000 and divided equally between wards 11 and 14 shall be reviewed and adjusted where appropriate based on historical actuals. Can you just explain, what is that?
So through the chair, I believe there is a allotment of funds that relates to those wards that have extended boundaries that require a fair amount of travel. And so this provides a dedicated set of funds for those councillors to apply their travel expenses against their kilometers, mileage expenses against them. And as our practice in the past has been reviewing previous year's actuals to set those allocations, so I get, sorry, through the council. The allocations are split across those affected councillors and they're split based on historical actuals. So each and every year, we reface each of the affected councillors. But again, the purpose is to provide some dedicated funds for travel expenses, more specifically kilometer expenses for those councillors.
Right, and, and, and thank you for that explanation. Certainly, madam chair, that makes perfect sense, just knowing geographically how large 11 and 14 are. I just wasn't sure how it related to the inner city fund when it wasn't inner city. So I found that, that part of it a bit confusing, but the explanation makes perfect sense. Thank you. I think it started out as quote-unquote inner city and then that was brought, that was brought in. So we made sure that we captured every money and all the nuances of the various wars. So we made sure that we captured everyone, all the nuances of the various wars, so we were able to try to catch up. Okay. All righty, so, that being said, we can remove that from the outstanding business list. That's moved by Counselor Green, seconded by Counselor Partridge, all in favor? Carrie? Great, so technically, maybe down to zip on the outstanding business list. We're guessing. Okay, everyone, then, we have nothing else on the table today? We asked.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Counselor Partridge, Counselor Green, all in favor? Carrie? Thank you, everyone. And I'm going to carry on that.